Declare the meeting open. Today is the 3rd of February, it's 6 o'clock. First of all, I would like to remind everyone that in accordance with Council Code of Meeting Practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. Now may I invite Chief Executive Officer Dr. Eddie Jackson to read the acknowledgement of country, prayer and counsel of council and affirmation. Eddie?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Good evening councillors and welcome back after the Christmas recess and the New Year festivities. The acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Caburgal clan of the Darag nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darag nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Dr. Eddie. Apologies, I think we have Mayor Wendy Waller. Any more apologies? No?
I'll move that way that they be noted.
Thank you very much councillor.
Yeah, I'll second that thanks Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor, Shilton. Okay, thank you very much all in favour, say hi against none, thank you very much. Okay. Condolences. I have one condolence motion, councillors, staff and listeners. Tonight, we oppose the honour the memory of Liverpool Catholic Club President Michael Coffey O A M, the father of three, grandfather of seven, successful businessman and keen golfer. Passed away unexpectedly and peacefully on Monday 11th January, aged 79. Michael will be remembered for making a major difference in the community. This achievement we are also recognising 2015 when he was awarded the Medal of the Order of Australia O A M for service to business, commerce and the community. The son of a firefighter, Michael was born on 26th October 1941 and grew up in Bathurst and Zimpel. After graduating with a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of New South Wales, Michael began working for the C S I R O's food division in 1959. He was a part of the team that revolutionised food preservation and transport through the use of shipping containers to import and export goods. Michael moved to the private sector in 1969. He was recruited by shipping company O C L, which later became P and O Containers. Michael played a role in opening up international trade relationships around the world. He travelled to the Middle East and India. He also led Australian trade missions to Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Pakistan and Iran. He later founded the logistic company River High Trading Consultancy and worked as the managing director for 21 years. Michael met his wife Trudy at the Catholic youth organisation dance in Liverpool. The couple married in 1967 and later settled in Leinsbad. Trudy is the director of social work at South Western Sydney Local Health District. At his funeral service at Old Saints Catholic Church, Liverpool on Wednesday 27th January, his daughter Rose said, "Michael treasured the people and nurtured and cherished his relationship." If you know that, you would know it was literally not possible for him to sit next to someone in any setting and not strike up a conversation and shortly after a mutual connection would be formed and a new friendship would be resolved, she said. Rose said her father was a devoted family man who also had a genuine care and compassion for people involved in all of the organisations he had been a part of. Dad held all of his role with great pride. He took all of his board role seriously and brought enthusiasm and corporate governance to all of his positions, she said. Michael became a member of Liverpool Catholic Club in 1998. He was appointed to the board in 2004, before serving as the Assistant Treasurer from 2004 to 2015 and Vice President from 2015 to 2016. Michael served as the President from 2016 until he died. He has also served as a board member of latter honorary Chairman of Caritain Mothercraft Society, which helps parents in the first five years of their child's life. Michael was a board director at Carrington Centennial Care in Camden. He was a former president and board member of the Rotary Club of Liverpool West. Michael was a life member of the Australian Arab Chamber of Commerce and Industry. He had previously served as a president of that organisation. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I express my deepest condolences to Trudy, their children, grandchildren and extended family members and friends during this difficult time. Michael will be missed by the community. May he rest in peace. Councillors, you know, I would like to say a few words.
Yes, I would if I may.
Councillor Roat, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to add my personal condolences, having had many occasions in dealing with Michael over the years, particularly in my prior capacity as Liverpool Chamber of Commerce Secretary. Michael will be sadly missed, as you have said. He was always so willing to help and accommodate the needs of the numerous requests by not only Chamber of Commerce but other organisations as Rotary and Quota and many other not-for-profit charitable organisations. During the bushfires of 2020, I particularly remember he opened the doors to people who had fled the fires with nothing more than the clothes on their back, working in cooperation with Harry Hunt, who provided free accommodation, and Michael through the Catholic Club to provide them with free meals. I'd like to extend my condolences to Michael's family and indeed the Catholic Club Board and the Catholic Club members. He will be sadly missed and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roat. Any more speakers? This one? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so it's moved by councillor Hachiri and signed by councillor Kellyander. All in favour, say hi against. All right, thank you very much encouraged. Okay. Now confirmation of the minute. Let me ask you first, any error or omission occurred from the previous minute?
One question if I may, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yes, go ahead councillor Hachiri.
Through you to the CEO on page 44 of the last minutes, Conf 07 related to the interim heritage order and requested a report back. Given the nature of it and the urgency of this, can I just get a status update of where that report is please?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you councillor. I know that we have undertaken preliminary work around the appointment of consultants, but I'll ask Mr Smith to provide a detail on that.
You've got your mic turned off, David.
Apologies councillors, through the CEO, I'll take that question on notice and get a status update from officers and we'll provide that, but as the CEO said, we are fairly well advanced.
Thank you.
Just in regards to this and the hiring of a consultant, can we ensure that councillors and the Heritage Historical Society have some input on the priority order? You know, there's a fair few heritage properties and buildings that will need to be looked at as part of this, but I think some are probably more urgent than others in terms of, you know, working out what heritage value they have, if any.
Happy to do that councillor. Thanks.
So, sorry, may I, Mr Deputy Mayor, for a sec, just following up?
Okay, go ahead councillor.
Just in relation, thanks for the responses Eddie and David, but we're hiring consultants and I thought this was something for council to do, to work out a way where this person doesn't suffer any hardship. So do we need a consultant to tell us how to do that?
My apologies councillor, I thought you meant around the heritage a heritage report that would make a contemporary assessment of all the buildings that should be listed as heritage buildings.
Yeah, so it's not about that, it's about us.
Yeah, sorry, my apologies, I misunderstood. Again, is Mr Wheeler available, David?
No, through the CEO, no, he's not available, but we will provide a status update on that council resolution. We'll circulate that to councillors tomorrow, but we are certainly working with that with haste, given the issues associated with that property and the personal hardship of the owner.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. May I ask someone to move the minute?
Move that way, thank you Mr Deputy Mayor.
Oh, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by?
Well, I don't know, Caress Rhodes will second it.
Okay, seconded councillor Roat. All right now, all in favour, please say hi against, none, I declare carried. All right. Now, any declaration of interest? None? So we move on. Public forum presentation nil, representation item on agenda, none. We move to the agenda item now, City Economy Egress, Egress 01, page 46, recommendation on 47.
I'm happy to move.
And I'll second Deputy Mayor.
Okay, it's moved by councillor Ayad, seconded by councillor Kellyander.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead councillor Roat.
I note that this is just about the bridge and I totally agree with the recommendation as put and agree with the mover and seconder, but I was wondering if council is aware of any plans to upgrade Heathcote Road into two lanes in both directions?
Through the Chair, if I may.
Oh, well, I have a question.
Councillor Rhodes, I think there is an upgrade and that's being done by the state government. Our local, our member Melanie Givens has worked on that and called for works to be done along Heathcote Road. It's been in the process for a while.
And I was wondering if council is aware of any plans?
Okay, Mr CEO, have you got any answer?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, yes, we're aware of plans councillors and I'll ask Mr Wif to provide some detail on that, please.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon councillors. The Heathcote Road, it's a state government road, it's a classified state road. So Transport for New South Wales is responsible for its management. The proposal that council is aware of, it's the first road session within the Liverpool local government area from Infantry Parade to the Avenue. That's a portion that Transport for New South Wales is working on at the moment. In the current state budgets, there is funding for, the design has been completed and there is funding for contractors to be called for that road session to be upgraded to two lanes in each direction. The remaining road sessions, council and for that matter, Sutherland Council has suggested to Transport for New South Wales to look at long-term road widening to provide two lanes in each direction, but at this stage, Transport has not agreed to that arrangement. In transport futures, there's a long-term strategy for the agency to consider road widening to two lanes in each direction as a long-term project. Thank you.
Thank you Charles.
Thank you for that update, thank you.
Just a question through you Deputy Mayor. Any timeframe on that there Charles, when that will proceed?
Through the councillor, Deputy Mayor, at this stage, there is no timeline. Usually Transport tells council when a project is about 10 years before construction starts. At this stage, there is no indication that that's the timeframe that the agency is looking at.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. Sorry, did we, did we have a notice of motion about this a couple of years ago? I remember Infantry Parade and Heathcote Road, there being a notice of motion at some point.
Through the Deputy Mayor, if you like, I can provide a response to that. Yes, there was a notice of motion for Transport for New South Wales to bring forward installation of traffic signals at the Heathcote Road and Infantry Parade intersection. Council have made a number of representations and what Transport for New South Wales has agreed to is that as part of the current construction they will be doing, they will bring forward installation of the traffic signals, but we have not succeeded in getting Transport to change his mind that that signal should, or an interim set of signals should be installed at that intersection.
Okay, so I guess a bit of half a win there, but.
Yeah, it's half a win, but I think it's now in the state budget. So that upgrades and the traffic signals would be done.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you Charles, any further questions? If no further questions, I put the motion all in favour, say hi against. I declare the motions carried. COP 01, page 52, recommendation on 63.
May I first play the book? Yes.
Oh, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Shilton. Okay, thank you. Any questions or comment? If none, I put the motion all in favour, say hi against. Thank you very much, I declare the motion carried. COP 03, page 78, recommendation on 78.
We do need a new motion for this that locks us in to allow councillors to submit their nominations by a certain time to attend the National General Assembly. And as nominate delegates now, can we nominate a time for people to send in their their interest in attending?
May I ask the CEO? Maybe George can give you an answer for your questions?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. George, can I ask you around the timeframe involved in the submission of motions?
Yes, thank you, through the CEO. The deadline for submissions is the 25th of March and they need to be endorsed by council. So therefore, if any motions that council proposes to submit to the conference would need to be submitted and endorsed at the next council meeting, so that meeting in three weeks' time. So if I sent out a deadline to councillors subsequent to this meeting of say, say this time next week, and then we would include it in the council agenda for the next February meeting for council to consider and adopt or consider.
Okay.
I suggest that we move a motion number one saying that. And again, on George's advice, when do motions have to be in concerning the National General Assembly? How much time do we have to put them in?
I think you just answered that. You know, if we get them in before the next meeting, we can endorse them at the next meeting and then.
So that's the motions as well as the nominate.
Well councillor Roat, you know, I should suggest to you, for number one, any councillors interested in attending the conference, okay, just contact George and show interest.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay.
And about the motion.
Number two, if there is any motion, please submit it.
By such and such a date?
Exactly right, before the deadline.
So is that the same deadline, George?
Through the CEO, so firstly, I will need to send something out to councillors to seek motions so that we can then place it on the agenda for the next February meeting for council to consider. So that deadline, like I said earlier, won't be longer than a week from now. And then, and then council will need to consider it at the February meeting. So that will be your deadline because the March meeting passes, by the time the March meeting comes around, that's after the National General Assembly deadline. So council would need to adopt it at the February meeting on the 24th.
I'm happy to move a motion along those lines.
What's your motion?
The motion would be the councillor submit motions to the CEO by the 10th of February 2021 for consideration for the 24th February council meeting. And number two, any councillor submit motions to the CEO by the 10th of February 2021 for consideration at the 24th of February council meeting.
Okay.
So one is for motions and one is for councillors' nominations to attend.
Okay, so the motion moved by councillor Roat, any seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that, thank you Deputy Mayor.
Okay, seconded by councillor Shilton. Okay, so I put the motion all in favour, say hi against, I declare the motion carried, thank you. COP 03.
I just have some questions if I may.
The motion councillor's carried now is finished. So you've got questions about the review of council policies?
Yes, COP 03.
Okay, so COP 03.
Yeah.
Page 78, recommendation 78.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask, would it be possible in the councillor access to information and interaction with staff policy, would it be possible to include a 4.8 on page 89? A 4.8 that reads that councillors are entitled to access the list and role of rate payers within the LGA?
Okay, well, first of, sorry, first of all, I have to put the motion in and you can amend it if the mover and the seconder accept it. Okay, so the recommendation on the screen.
Sure, but I just wanted to know, I mean, I would be happy to move it. I just wanted to know if staff could let me know if that would be possible.
Oh yeah.
So the question for the CEO now.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I just check that with our legal team that there are no privacy issues with that or any other regulations that would prohibit that? We may have to take that on notice councillor.
Um. I wouldn't really, if we took it on notice, then would that mean that we defer this? And then it come before us with the information at next council meeting? So for example, I mean, I'd be happy to move what's in the book, just remove councillor access to information and interaction with staff policy?
Yeah.
I mean, whatever, what's your advice on that?
Can I just check with Ms Channel, are we aware if there are any privacy issues or would you prefer to take that question on notice?
Thank you Dr Jackson, councillors, through the CEO. There may be issues in relation to privacy and the release of that information, given that it does relate to private information. I would like to take that on notice and come back to councils in relation to that question.
So in this case, it seems to me councillor Ayad, you can add your request to the motion.
Okay.
You have to wait till to get an answer.
Okay, so if we, if now I just moved the motion as is, excluding the councillor accessing, councillor access to information, interaction with staff policy and just put that on hold till next council meeting with the legal advice? Would be then we have to vote on that next council meeting please? So basically, I'd have this policy third.
Okay, so the question to the CEO now, is it possible to remove number two and move one, three, four and leave number two for next meeting?
Mr Deputy Mayor, can I suggest something?
Just.
Not Haggerty, it's coming back all the time.
Okay.
That we do endorse it, subject to legal advice, blah, blah, blah. So subject to the legal advice, if it's okay, we get that information, if it's not. Subject to written legal advice?
Yep.
Reading to... Yep, along those lines, going perfect, whether it's timing.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you happy with that councillor Ayad?
I'm happy with that, thank you councillor Hachiri. So I'm happy to move that as is.
Okay, so I have councillor Ha.
Yes, Mr Deputy Mayor. Just, just, I'm not sure if this will answer the problem. Councillors are entitled to the electoral role for the area that they represent. Do you remember, we get a CD with everybody's names and the addresses on that? So I can't see that being a problem. If councillors do get that CD with all the information on it, why is it a problem here?
The question is directed to the CEO.
Councillors, it's to ensure that changes in regard to privacy laws, they may have impacted on the release of that information. I would be reluctant to, not to check on the legalities of it first before making that available.
If I may just comment, I've contacted the commission on this and it's come to my attention that according to the legislation, candidates can receive the role, but they do not give it to elected councillors. So the reason I put this up is I thought candidates can receive it, so why can't councillors who are already elected and already on council have it? Because it does facilitate communication with your constituents and your community.
Okay councillor Ayad, thank you for the information, I've got councillor Haggerty.
Yep, I was just going to say what councillor Ayad said, which is, I think there was a ruling beginning of last year that made it much more restrictive for councillors to access their eyes opposed to state members of parliament. The other point I'll make is, can we just make sure we're asking the correct thing here? We're talking about a list of rate payers and a list of who's on the electoral role and they're two very different things.
Yeah. Well, okay, the CEO is listening now.
Yep. Happy to do it councillors.
So which one are we, which one are we asking for here, rate payers or the electoral role?
Sorry councillor Haggerty, are you asking me the question? I'm not exactly sure.
Well, it's, yeah, it's your, it's your.
Yes, yes, so initially, initially it was rate payers, but through the discussion, it's just kind of evolved to electoral role. So yeah, why not have it? Um, so yeah, why not have it? I, I think if councillors that are endorsed can receive it, I do believe that uh councillors are, are entitled to it to better facilitate their role. If they have an interest in Liverpool, we should know.
Okay, well, councillor.
The role, that means they do have an interest in, in, in our L G A. So um I, I, I believe you'd be privy to it because you do work in Ann Stanley's office, um.
Uh, point of order.
I do know that that has nothing to do with council.
Just a minute, just a minute, councillor, just a minute, what's your point of order?
Um. There are pretty strict rules around uh accessing the electoral role in my personal job. Uh, and I'm not allowed, like, you know, it's quite, I can't do that as a councillor, so any inference that uh I'm breaching electoral laws, I take pretty seriously and I'm offended.
No, I, I, I retract.
Councillor, councillor, would you please withdraw your comment?
Yes, I withdraw my comment. I retract my comment. And if I could just reword, my understanding is that state members
Okay.
uh are entitled to receive that information.
Thank you very much, councillor Ayad, withdraw her remark and thank you very much. We've got the, the motion in front of us. So it's a move by councillor Ayad, seconded by councillor, I remember, Hachidi. I put the motion, only five of us say aye, against, I declare the motion.
Can I be recorded as being against that one?
Yes, they, um, record me as voting against too. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, councillor Hagerty and councillor Shilton.
I would also like to be recorded as voting against. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, councillor Calianda as well. All right, thank you very much. So we move now for the committee report.
Uh, happy to move them as a whole.
As a whole, thank you very much. It's moved by councillor Rhodes.
Happy to second it.
Seconded by councillor Ha. Any questions? If no question, I put the motion, only five of us say aye, against, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. The questions with notice. Number one, we have councillor. Who is it? Councillor Hachidi, thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I know the response will come in the next council meeting. I'll pre-warn that if the response is the state government hasn't done anything, I'll be moving a motion to campaign for this road. I think it's about time Liverpool got its share when it comes to promises that are made. The corridor is very important, and this is about establishing what it's cost, whether it's the ratepayer, the taxpayer, a grant, uh lottery money, whatever it is. Um, let's work out what these costs are, because from my understanding is, all this money, time and effort has been spent, and we haven't gotten anywhere. So I'll wait for the response on that one.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions still councillor Hachidi, seven eleven contribution.
Thank you again, Mister Deputy Mayor. I'm not gonna steal councillor Hagerty's thunder in his um nom. So I won't move a motion, but Edmiston Park was rezoned in two thousand and six. And there are people still waiting to be acquired. So fourteen years ago, this was rezoned. My understanding is there's millions of dollars sitting in section seven elevens in that area. And all I'm after is a clear strategy on how we're gonna spend that money. I know the um financial reports show that we earn point nine three, and there's a few in the three percents. But the way land value is going, it's going up at more than a rate of point nine three over the years. So I think if the money's there, we need the strategy and we need to start buying these lands up before they get way out of hand.
Okay, so question three, councillor Hachidi as well, the line of channels, the rural and growth area.
Thank you. Can I ask if we do have any information on this one?
Oh, you're fairly good question to the C E O.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Mister O'Ton, or Mister Smith? Actually, I'm more likely to be Mister Patterson, my apologies.
Mister Patterson, thank you, Mister C.
Yeah, thanks, uh, C E O. We, we're currently working through um a response for this, this, uh, this question, uh, with notice. Um, we do have um a maintenance, a maintenance program uh for our drainage assets. Um, but uh there's, there's a lot, a lot, a lot more work that's required to um to uh to bring, to bring those assets up to speed. So at this stage, we're working through that uh response. Uh, and we'll have that ready for the next council meeting.
Can I ask a question about this one as well?
Yes, you can ask, sure.
Thank you. Um, my understanding is it's, and I, councillor Hachidi can clear this up or not, but if we're referring to those sort of little lots that are, you know, sort of about the size of two, one house or two or three ha, house-sized lots in places like Astral or Edmiston Park, um, I'd, I'd ask similar questions via email. And my understanding is that a fair chunk of these little sort of lots are owned by the developer and once a retention basin goes in downstream, that they can then develop them.
No, that's, sorry councillor Hagerty, I think that moves into the next one, the detention basin ones. This is more along roads like fourth, like Edmiston.
All right.
Uh, where it's a council asset. And we know when it rains, it pours out this way. And then it floods, and it floods sometimes because water can't get through because it's full of grass. Even the um down at Ash Road in Preston's, which I think Mister Patterson previously, um, was, was cleared out nicely. Um, but I'm just looking for, wha- what is the turnaround time on getting these channels cleaned out? Um, I know previously we had, there's some of these in West Hoxton. I used to live next to one. Um, we used to have this nice machine, it was a big spider that we used to contract. And lately I've seen miniatures of that out on, out there. And they do mow a hundred or two hundred metres and then they stop for some reason, so I'm not, not sure.
Okay, yep, I'm, I'm, yeah, okay, I understand. It's about water channels. I'll wait for the next one.
Okay, so next one. It's number four, who is it?
And this is the detention basin one. I thank David and Lena who both called me today in relation to.
Detention basin in growth area, councillor.
Um, what, what I'm looking for here to see if councillor charges a compliance levy, which was introduced by council some years ago. And the purpose of that compliance levy was to ensure compliance and to improve compliance. Now, detention basins are being built out in the growth areas. And some of these detention basins, the complaints that are coming through is that they're not mowed, not cut. There's rats, there's spiders, there's things growing out of them. Um, what I'm looking for here is do our compliance officers actually go out? Uh, once a D A's approved and an occupation certificate's been given and everybody's moved on? Does somebody actually then go out and make sure that these detention basins are being maintained? Again, to ensure they do their job, capture water and then release it slowly, because at the moment, there's some really bad ones out there.
Okay. All right, question five, councillor Hachidi, developer or construction in growth area.
Excuse me through the chair. Um, just on question three and question four, I have a question regarding the maintenance. Well, I have two questions really. I know that um low-flow drains have been suggested on many occasions and never implemented.
Well, ju- just, just a minute councillor Road, did you submit your question before or are you asking a question right now?
I'm asking a question right now.
Okay.
Before, before we were, is that okay?
Well, that's fine, but anyway, I'll just remind you, we passed that one quite some times ago. But anyway, you can ask your questions.
I got confused as to which one you were dealing with, okay?
Okay, so what is your questions now?
Okay, in regard to question three, the drainage channels, um there's been requests by a, a certain councillor in regards to the low-flow treatment of um drainage channels. And all the time it is dismissed and we have the open drain channels, which has implications of greater maintenance. And I just wondered why, if council could give us uh perhaps a uh, a report on why it is that they feel that the uh, the open uh channels are a better solution than the low-flow channels in the drainage channel systems. And my other question, which was in regards to question four.
Yep.
Was again in regards to maintenance of the water detention basins. And I believe that council intends to produce a calendar with the schedule of dates, times, et cetera, that the maintenance for all our parks, which would include the detention basins, uh is scheduled to occur. Now, uh, I was just wondering if we could also be given an update how we're going when that calendar might be available on the council website.
Okay, I would have a question to the C E O. Mister C E O, are you able to to provide some answers or take the questions on notice?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We'll provide answers to those questions as part of a comprehensive response to the submitted questions and notice.
Okay, thank you very much. You're happy with that, councillor Road?
Very much, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move forward questions now to question six. Uh, councillor Hachidi, Kevin Gaddis?
Uh, question six, I'll wait for the response on this one. Depending on the response, um, if there isn't any program in place, I will be moving that we actually, once a development occurs on one side, the council construct, if it is facing a council park or council-owned land, the urban gutter on the other side. And the reason for doing that is if a half-road is being built by a developer at the moment, and that's opposite, for example, a council park, uh you get half-smooth road, then you get a bit of a hump, then you have gravel pretty much on the other side. And then the road breaks down. So I'll just wait for the response and then I'll do something in the next council meeting, depending on the response. Thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Number seven, councillor Hachidi, council meeting.
Uh, couple of questions and then I'll probably gotta move a motion. Question to the C E O. A staff back in, not that it's any of my business and I can't direct staff and I won't, uh, a staff back in the office?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, staff are, uh, we have phased our return, uh, obviously based on health advice, uh, and we continue to look at ways in which we um adapt to the new normal. It's still a work in progress, um, but all staff have been expected to be back in the office from the fourth of February, um.
Could I then move a motion, please, Mister Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, what's your motion?
Uh, the council, as of the twenty fourth of the second twenty twenty one, return to council meetings in the council chamber. To, that's number one. To note the council staff are now working from the council building.
Of course, taking into consideration the social distance and other stuff, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll leave that up to the um C E O.
Yeah, can we, can we?
I'm happy to second it if we add that bit to it, that um as of twenty fourth of the second, uh, return to council meeting in the council chamber, uh, in line with health advice.
Absolutely.
Okay. If I second it by councillor Hagerty.
And then just one question and I'll see if councillor Hagerty wants to take this on board. So the C E O, we generally hold one council meeting in the rural area. Normally it's February, March. Do you think we can be in a position that the March meeting is held in Brindelli?
Thanks councillor, if you don't mind, I'll take that one on notice and see what the, the operational uh implications of that are. I would point out councillors further to, um, the motion, um, that the emergency legislation that covered the convening of council meetings uh online holds through until the end of March. Um, and in line with that, our response was going to, uh, as we had proposed for the next council meeting, was going to give a comprehensive uh outline of the, the health, the legal, uh, the work health and safety side, the costs involved of a return to the council chambers.
Thank you, Mister C. Just a bit of a background on it, um, there's many councils out there that are being meeting face-to-face throughout the whole um pandemic, as they call it. Um, our staff are back in the council buildings. I see you're working from the office, Mister C E O. And I'm sure there is one other councillor that's gonna agree with me on this one. I really do miss Rose. So it'd be nice to be back in the um, in, in the council meeting and, and residents wanna come back and actually watch council and wanna make submissions to council. Yes, they've got the opportunity now to do the written ones. Um, but, you know, uh, they, they want it in person. Now, in relation to those emergency things, can we have a point three, sorry, can we put a point three with the acceptance of the seconda? Um, that we look into ways to have the district forums return to face-to-face? I mean, obviously.
You beat me to it, but I was gonna propose um hybrid. So I think there was a discussion with council staff at one point with our investigating um hybrid. So there'd be a face-to-face meeting, but there'd also be broadcast online.
Yeah, or, or that, or whatever it is. And, and again, there's people that want, whilst the uptake is good sometimes in the online, um, you, you probably noticed for those that chair it, the participation does drop. People are not as comfortable being on the computer as they are in person. And if, if we can do this in a safe way, let's look at ways of doing it and being back in front of our constituents.
Yep, happy with that.
Thank you, councillor.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor, can I just clarify?
Yeah, go ahead.
In advance of the motion, I go on to vote, if the motion is passed, uh, does that negate the need for a response? Uh, to be provided to the.
Yeah, yeah, no dramas, the, the response is gone if this passes.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mister Deputy Mayor, the um, Tony.
Councillor Shilton, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to have in paragraph three, uh, district forums and committees return to face-to-face?
Yeah, fine, anything else that's gone to online and whatnot.
Yeah, well, certainly committees, particularly the uh environmental and a few others, the intermodal involves contact with constituents and should really be on the same footing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion moved by councillor Hachidi, seconded by councillor Hagerty. I put the motion, only five of us say aye. Against, general consent, thank you very much. I declare the motion carried. Now, we move to cop zero four, page one seven one. Recommendation on one seventy-two included in the addendum. Can someone to move the motion?
Happy to move that way.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty.
I'll.
Seconded. Have you pardon?
We want addendum.
It is, yeah, yeah, including the addendum, it's one seventy-one, one seventy-two.
Yep, I just had some questions, please.
Okay, uh, first of all, who, who seconded?
That was me, de, uh, councillor Calianda, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Calianda, thank you very much, councillor. What's your question, councillor Ayad?
Um, my question is, um, how come I have here before me um advice from the Office of Local Government? Because that's not what I asked for. I asked for a policy be, to be put together within the guidelines of the um act. That was the, the aim of this. And now I'm being, uh, I have a report before me. Um, that um is speaking against this, not supporting this, and it's uh accompanied with a letter from the Office of Local Government, which I, I never asked for. I asked them to put together a tight policy. Of course, with the guidelines of the Office of Local Government. And for actual policy to be, to be put before us, but there's no policy for us to vote on tonight.
I'll refer a question to the C E O.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, councillor. Um, councillor, I would refer you to the uh correspondence uh to the Office of Local Government, which was attached as an appendix to the, the actual report. Uh, we sought advice based on the actual resolution, which was passed and is cited in that uh, in that exchange, which is to create a policy with a budget limit that will enable councillors in good faith to access independent professional advice. Uh, that's what the, the subsequent report is based on.
Okay, um, I would like to put up a foreshadowed motion, please.
What's your further, your further motion, councillor?
My foreshadowed. My foreshadowed um is um.
Sorry, point of order?
Okay, alright.
Then.
What's your point of order councillor?
Don't we have to vote on this one before the foreshadow, we hear what the foreshadow did?
Okay, we will have done it before, but let's see what's her shadow.
But I thought the process was, we don't find out what the foreshadowed is until the the substantive motion lapses.
Our last, well the CEO, what do you think, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, um that is also my understanding, but I will ask. Is Miss Wettis available to offer advice on that, please, from a governance perspective?
Thank you, through the CEO, um councillor Hagerty is correct. The not the um original motion needs to be voted on first before the shadowed motion can be for forward.
Okay, thank you very much. In this case, I put.
Sorry, just point, point of order then, again, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
What is your point of order?
And and I respect the fact that the mayor, uh that that was the way this is done, and I'm not sure if it is. But I had to review the council minutes recently, um for for other things that I was digging up. And in that review, there was a lot of foreshadowed motions that were actually in print in the minutes and then documented. But then, when the original motion is moved, uh and if it is passed, under the foreshadowed motion, it states, uh motion was passed, therefore the foreshadowed motion lapses. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding of if something has changed.
Okay, I'll refer a question to the CEO.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I'm just looking through the uh code of meeting practice. Um on sections nine point one six, nine one seven and nine one eight refer to that. If you think it would be helpful, I'm happy to uh read the uh the contents of that. Paragraph nine point one six, a councillor may propose a foreshadowed motion in relation to the matter. Uh the subject of the original motion before the council, without a seconder during debate on the original motion. The foreshadowed motion is only to be considered if the original motion is lost or withdrawn. And the foreshadowed motion is then moved and seconded. If the original motion is carried, the foreshadowed motion lapses. Nine one seven states that where an amendment has been moved and seconded, a councillor may, without a seconder, foreshadow a further amendment that they propose to move after the first amendment has been dealt with. There's no limit to the number of foreshadowed amendments that may be put before the council at any time. However, no discussion can take place on foreshadowed amendments until the previous amendment has been dealt with and the foreshadowed amendment has been moved and seconded. Nine one eight, foreshadowed motions and foreshadowed amendments are to be considered in the order in which they are proposed. However, foreshadowed motions cannot be considered until all foreshadowed amendments have been dealt with.
Well, this is fine.
So question to you then, Mr. CEO, from that reading through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Um my my understanding, if it's different to anyone else's, they can jump forward, is a foreshadowed motion can be moved, doesn't need to be seconded and can be recorded in the minutes.
That was also my understanding councillor.
And I would like to say that it seems to be the position that is followed by other um local government meetings and things like that. You already always know what the foreshadowed motion is. You don't get the opportunity to vote on that until the first motion is finished with.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay.
So through.
Well, first of all, yeah.
Can I put up my foreshadowed motion? Because according to that, I can put up my foreshadowed motion. So then my fellow councillors can make an informed decision, because then they'll have both motions before them.
Well, from the beginning, this is what I thought. You can put your shadow, foreshadow motion, but we will deal with the original motion first of all. That's what I said from day one.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, you can you can put your motion, your foreshadow motion, and we will deal with the motion first.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, the foreshadowed motion is that council staff draw up a policy which allows councillors to seek their own legal advice, own, uh le- um own independence, sorry, independent legal advice. Within the legislative guidelines. And with advice from the Office of Local Government. So basically, I want council staff to utilize the Office of Local Government to assist in putting this together, because it would need very tight guidelines and caps on expenditure. But I do believe that this will give the city council, um will put us on the forefront for best practice and it will assist councillors in making very, very informed decisions. I mean, we're not experts, we're not experts at law.
Okay councillor, thank you very much. Let's uh deal with the original motion now. And I'll put the motion, it's moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Calianda. All in favor, say aye please?
Aye.
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 Uh George, may I ask you to put the list of names, please? Okay, councillor Ayed.
I'm against.
Against, councillor Valoud?
Against.
Councillor Hachidi?
Against.
Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, Paul.
Councillor Ha?
Paul.
Councillor Calianda?
Oh Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Kanip?
Four Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Rood?
Four.
Councillor Shelton?
Four, thank you Deputy Mayor.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, six to four. The motion carried, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we move to notice of motion, norm zero one.
Thank you.
Councillor Nathan Hagerty.
Yep, uh thank you Deputy Mayor. Um so I take it, take the the norm as as read. Um uh people have have had a look here and um not only that, people are you know, no doubt been contacted by residents out in the Eritreopolis and and people have had submissions from people out in the Eritreopolis.
Uh just a minute councillor, you officially informally moved your motion. May I ask for a second before we start?
Yes, I am second.
Sorry, seconded.
Ali Kanip, councillor Kanip. Okay, thank you. So now you can speak in favor of your motion councillor Hagerty.
Thank you. Um yeah, look, we we've already sort of covered it in in councillor Hachidi's questions somewhat. Um but as I've said here in the background, the, you know, in my, in my opinion, the current system for compulsory land acquisition is unfair and and inefficient. Um the situation, uh what what I will, I'll make a point here that uh what I'm not proposing, what I'm certainly not proposing here is that landowners at the Eritreopolis jump the queue. Uh I know we've got people that have been waiting over a decade at places like Middleton Grange, Edmonton Park, um and Austral. Um but I'm not proposing here that people at the Eritreopolis jump the queue. What I'm proposing is that they're actually allowed to join the queue. Because the current situation at the Eritreopolis is with the exception of a little corridor along Thompson's Creek. Everyone that's been, um I guess is owned as a water basin or a waterway or a park or anything like that actually isn't in the queue. They're not allowed to get in the queue yet. They're not allowed to uh start the process for uh acquisition, they're not allowed to claim hardship. Um they're effectively stuck with uh their land. I know many of them have approached uh companies about seeing if there are any willing, when included, to buy the land. The answer is no. Um one resident whose land is to be turned into a water basin has contacted council. Council obviously doesn't have any um any information on when, who or if is going to acquire their land. They've then contacted the um planning partnership. They said, oh, it's a water basin, contact Sydney Water. They've contacted Sydney Water and Sydney Water has no idea about it. So all the residents are asking for uh is a bit of a plan, a bit of a timeline that says, you know, here is, uh you know, your land's going to be acquired, uh here's the timeline for it. Um and in the same way we do in Austral, as we do in in Middleton Grange or wherever we're acquiring land. If you're experiencing hardship, um you go through the normal hardship procedures. Now, there are people uh out in the Eritreopolis uh who are facing pretty serious um issues. Um there are people with um serious illness, there are people who've gone through family breakdown. Uh and they'd like nothing more than to to sell up um and and move on and just live the rest of their lives. But unfortunately, they can't do that at the moment. So what I'm proposing here is is basically to allow these residents to join the queue, not jump the queue, um and be allowed to, uh I guess, you know, get some answers about acquisition. Um and if 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 they meet the criteria, go through the um the hardship process. Uh what I'm also asking for, you know, what I'm also saying here is that I I don't see this as the ultimate solution. This is merely the first step in in I guess a series of other steps to fix up this system. So if it works here and it works well, that's fantastic. Um let's see if we can learn some lessons and apply it to the rest of the LGA. Um and the, yeah, and I'll and I'll leave it at that.
Question.
Okay, what's your question councillor?
Through you to the CEO who will then probably pass it on. Um thanks councillor Hagerty for that and the hardship and people not knowing, but with the waterways and the channels to the CEO, isn't there a hardship scheme at the moment where our residents can apply to council, submit their case and council then needs to acquire it under the hardship provisions?
Thank you councillor, uh yes we do, but I'll ask Mr. Smith for the detail on that.
Yeah, thank you CEO, absolutely. So under the the local environmental plan and the state environmental planning policy for Austral, if the land is currently zoned for a public purpose uh and is identified on the land reservation acquisition map, that states who the acquisition authority is, whether it's council or another government body, uh then the acquisition processes kick in, including the ability, uh if they meet the hardship um provisions to apply to council for hardship. The issue that we have in the Eritreopolis uh is apart, as councillor Hag- uh Hagerty has said, apart from a small portion of land adjacent to Thompson's Creek, there is no other land identified in uh the SEP Western Sydney Eritreopolis uh for acquisition. And that has been the issue that has been raised um by the community. And it's also been uh an issue that staff have taken up directly with the Department of Planning and the Planning Partnership.
Sorry, so just on that, if we don't know who's being acquired, how do we know if they're gonna actually even fall into hardship if the acquisition scheme was done? If we don't know what we're acquiring, who do we know who's in hardship can sell, can't sell then?
That's point two, that we we develop that scheme.
Alright, so but but what we're saying here is we, let's develop a scheme to buy people, but yet we don't even know who we're buying. Is that what I just understood from Mr. Smith, except for Thompson's Creek?
Well, what I'm proposing is that we develop.
Sorry councillor, sorry councillor, can I just, just get a better understanding? I'm not trying to be rude here councillor Hagerty at all. I'm just trying to get an understanding. If we don't know what we're buying, how do we know, and we and we're gonna get contacted by residents, how do we know if they're even gonna qualify for acquisition?
Through through the CEO, if I may, just in relation to point the resid- the the notice of motion in the book at the moment, apart from point one noting a range of things, point two says right to the state government proposing an Eritreopolis acquisition scheme to allow for expediated land acquisition for landowners experiencing hardship in the Eritreopolis and then upon approval X, Y and Z. The issue that we have and which staff have raised with the Department of Planning is, and I think this goes to the point of the notice of motion, is in the Eritreopolis SEP, apart from a small portion of Thompson's Creek, yes, there's areas that are identified as environment and recreation zone. That's not subject to acquisition per the SEP at this point in time. The Department of Planning has advised that they are doing a South Creek plan that may provide answers to the council and the community in relation to that issue. And of course, with the precinct plans currently on exhibition, it does identify additional land that would be subject to stormwater drainage basins and drainage channels and open space. And obviously, that's on exhibition at the moment. So our position has been, if you aren't going to be identifying that, how does that then get reflected in the zoning? And therefore, how does that get reflected in a land reservation acquisition map? And who is the acquisition authority so that those discussions can be had? At the moment, we don't have that information and that's what I think is causing the issues in the community. Uh quite rightly, um in relation to to that uncertainty.
Yeah, just just on that, and councillor Hagerty, I'm supportive of where you're going with it. I am also supportive that there's people since two thousand and six been waiting in Edmonton Park to be acquired. And I take your point that no one's jumping the queue here, it's joining the queue. But point two reads, right to the state government proposing an Eritreopolis acquisition scheme to allow for expediated land acquisitions for land owners experiencing hardship in the Eritreopolis. Is that all landowners or is that just landowners that are getting identified? I mean, just for the sake of clarity, otherwise then people in rural area or the Eritreopolis could be thinking I'm zoned B two or wherever the zoning is out there. Um that I've got hardship now, I can't sell it to anyone else because I haven't got sewer. Council's putting on a seven or eight percent, seven eleven contribution, which is gonna go crazy. Um so which people are you identifying? If we can just clear that up?
Yep, uh six and a half percent contribution, but uh we'll let that one go through. Um yeah. Pieces of land that will be acquired by a a government agency, whether that's Sydney Water, the state government, RT, RMS, council. So no, if you've got a lot that's hundred percent B four, um then uh that's not what we're talking about at this stage.
Can I uh through?
Just a minute coun- just uh just a minute councillor. Have you finished councillor Hachidi?
For now, thank you Deputy Mayor, unless something else comes up.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Rood?
Yes, uh uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um look, it is very confusing, the actual motion. I wonder if uh number two of the motion would read simply uh right to West Rock neighbouring councils, state and federal MPs, urging the state, federal government to work with local governments to initiate acquisition scheme to allow the expediate land acquisition for landowners, full stop. Because our problem is that um it's taking us too long to get our money in to be able to deliver the infrastructure, as I understand it. So I think that you're trying to make it too specific and uh we're missing the real point. We need to be able to have a system that allows the purchases of properties that need to be purchased, purchased to um not only help the the landowners, but also help council in the delivery of infrastructure. So number two, uh right to West Rock neighbouring councils and state and federal MPs, the state government uh MPs urging the state gu- and federal governments to work with local governments.
I'll I'll save the typist some time and just say no, I'm happy with the way it's worded. Uh the reason being, the state government are the agency that's responsible for determining the zoning, they're responsible for determining what will be acquired, they're responsible for determining who will acquire it when. Um I I think what you're proposing councillor Rood actually makes it more more confusing. It needs to be short, sharp. State governments are the one, the state government are the ones responsible. That's who we write to, that's who we get to fix this problem.
Okay, uh. You know, well.
Yeah, I'm 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 but based on all that, I'm gonna speak, and this is not gonna be popular with anyone that's listening or around the place, but I'm gonna speak against it. And I'll foreshadow a mo- a motion that this be deferred. Um that um the motion be deferred until further information. That the motion be deferred until further information is provided on what land needs to be purchased in the growth areas of Liverpool LGA. That's going to be the the foreshadowed and I'm going to speak now against the motion. I was hoping not to, because I understand the pain that's being felt out there. I have been through the same thing, being a rural person. It's important to get an understanding of what we need to purchase. And I just know councillor Hagerty's comments there that it's, this is all the state government's fault. I can't accept that fully and I'm not here batting.
So are you talking, are you talking against the motion?
I'm talking against the motion.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not here batting for.
Point of order.
Yes.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was the state government's fault. I said it's the state government are the responsible agency here.
Sorry councillor Hagerty, I understood that you said it's their mess, they've got to fix it and everything else. If that's not what you said, I'll play it back later, but I withdraw that if that's not what you said.
Okay, thank you councillor.
No worries at all, deputy mayor. At the end of the day, it's important before we go to anyone to understand what it is that we are going to purchase. Unless we get a list of properties that we do need to purchase, have an understanding of what we need to purchase, there's no point going to government and saying, listen, we need to purchase land, we're not sure which one it is, but we want you to purchase it. Land acquisitions have been a part of council for many, many years, especially this council, which is a growth council. We've been through Edmondson Park, Middleton Grange, we're going through Austral now. There's lots of pieces of land that council needs to acquire. Council, and thanks councillor Hagerty for reminding me, introduced a section 711 contribution to go about an exhibition, not endorsed by council yet, which I've voted against. At the highest level, I think this council has seen it six and a half percent. So council is happy to say, we're going to put a levy of six and a half percent on people who want to build in that area. But we want the state government to purchase land that possibly council needs to purchase through its section 711 funds, which are the highest that I've seen in this council area. I totally agree that we do need to support our residents when it comes to acquisitions and there are hardship out there with our residents. We can only have a hardship policy in place, anyone can apply under that hardship policy. If they are suffering hardship and council has seen cases and it's come before council before where we approved hardship cases for people in Austral and Edmondson Park, if I recall. What I'd like to see first is let's get an understanding of what it is we need to purchase, what the cost is going to be of all these acquisitions. Then we can go and lobby governments, state and federal. It's not just state here because it was the Eritreopolis that started this going, so that was a federal doing. Then we go to both of those levels and say, we've got a section 711 plan in place, we are going to collect this money. We're not going to see this money for a very long time. People are in hardship, we need to support our residents, we need you to forward fund some money so that we can acquire this. And when the money starts flowing through, we can then pay them back if we have to. But just to go in there and say, listen, this is what we need to do, we don't know what we're really doing. We don't know what land we need to buy, we don't know how much it's going to cost. And say, this is now your problem, I just don't think it's going to go anywhere. It'll look good on paper because we've said, yes, we've done something. We've sent a letter like we do many a times. But let's send a letter with some detail, with a plan, what we need, how much we need. And in that way, we do help our residents out as well.
Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Thank you councillor Hachiri. No, just, just a minute, just a minute please. I have councillor Road.
Well, I will give councillor Hagerty.
Would you like to talk, would you like to speak in favour of the motion or against the motion?
I would like to, neither of the motions are addressing the concerns that I raised. I would, I can foreshadow a motion.
Now, we have a foreshadow motion now.
I can foreshadow a motion. Or I can give each of the, well, I can't give it to councillor Patiti because he's going on another tangent, but I can say to councillor Hagerty, if he would rethink point two, back to my wording, which was write to the state, write to West Rock neighbouring councils.
So can we, let's, whatever you're proposing, let's add it as a point four and we'll see where we get with that.
Because you're duplicating things, you're making it far too complicated. The problem that we've got is that we need to expediate the land acquisition in all state and national significant developments. And the other motion that I'd put up is that we submit the motion to the national local government annual conference and get them to put this forward.
I'm having to accept yours councillor Rhodes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so now the second foreshadow, it's accommodated with the foreshadow moved by councillor Hachiri, is that correct?
Those motions that I was asking councillor Hagerty have now moved to councillor Hachiri's motion.
Thank you councillor, anytime.
Can I add a point four to my motion?
For yours, yes, what is it?
That council write to West Rock neighbouring councils, LG New South Wales, Algar, Queen of England, leave that bit out, local MPs, local state and federal MPs, supporting the proposed, supporting, supporting this proposal.
Okay.
Can I just?
Any, yes councillor Road, yes councillor Road.
Can we just move it up so that I can see that councillor Tootie's, how councillor Tootie's motion has been written, recorded?
Yeah, George, would you please just, okay?
And assess the viability of, there was another point which I said that submit a motion to the national local government annual conference.
It is number five, isn't it? Submit the motion to the LGA.
Yeah.
Annual conference.
Requesting forward funding acquisition scheme that will enable local governments to provide infrastructure supporting the development of national assets.
Okay. So councillor Hachiri, are you happy with that?
That wording is perfect, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. So councillor Road, all good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So now.
Writer reply?
I beg your pardon?
Do I have the writer reply?
Yes, yes, just a minute, let me ask the question. If anyone wants to speak in favour of your motion or against your motion? None? Okay councillor Hagerty, you can reply.
Thank you deputy mayor. I heard the comments from councillor Hachiri and I think we're in curious agreement. So absolutely, we need to define what land is being acquired. Yes, we need to define what land is being, who it's being acquired by. And that's what I'm, I might not be clear to everyone reading it, but that's what I'm proposing in point two. That part of that scheme includes, will include, you know, maps of what we're acquiring and who's acquiring it and the process there. So that's, that's, I'm basically agreeing with what councillor Hachiri's arguing. That part of this motion is we define what we're acquiring. The other point I will make is that, again, we're not proposing that anyone jump the queue. What we're proposing is that there is a queue for the people out there. And the final point I make is that the airport in the Eritreopolis, you know, while different, different, at different levels of government looking after it, effectively it's a, it's a project of national significance. The federal government are involved, the state government are involved and local government are involved. And that's why I've put point three in there that we seek collaboration from the state and federal government to fund and administer the scheme. So what I haven't said is who will run it and how they'll run it. I've left that somewhat open because I think that's for the state, federal and Liverpool council to sit down, work out how it's going to, how it's going to be funded, who's going to fund it, who's going to administer it, what land will be acquired by who. So I've left it somewhat open ended. But the idea here is that we, yes, we say we're going to across the entire Eritreopolis, the precincts that have been earmarked so far. What's going to be acquired, who's going to acquire it and how we're going to acquire it? I'm trying to answer those important questions now. And then to councillor Rhodes's point, yeah, look, that's right to everybody and get as much people on board. Obviously, it would be good to get Penrith council on board, they're in a similar situation to what we are. And that's right to our pick bodies, that's right to LG New South Wales, that's right to Algar. And that's right to our state and federal MPs. I'm sure they're getting as many phone calls and inquiries as we are and want this sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hagerty. So now I put the motion moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Canib. I put the motion all in favour, I say aye. Any against?
Aye.
I'm against.
So George, would you please put the list of names, please?
Mr Deputy Mayor, I have to clarify, are we voting on the motion?
On the motion moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Canib.
Thank you.
Okay councillor Ayad.
I'm against.
Councillor Ballot.
Against.
Councillor Hachiri.
Against.
Councillor Hagerty, of course, yes.
Yeah.
So councillor Haar. Councillor Haar.
Sorry, four.
So for the motion. Okay councillor Kalenda.
Four.
Councillor Canib.
Four.
Councillor Road.
Against.
Councillor Shilton.
Again, against, thank you.
Against. So I'm against as well. So the motion defeated. And now I move for the foreshadow. Motion moved by councillor Hachiri and seconded by councillor councillor Road, isn't it? Okay, thank you. Right, so councillor Hachiri wants to speak in favour of your motion.
Can we just see the motion, how it's written? Sorry councillor.
Okay.
Point one, sorry, point one. Now, there's nothing in there from the originals, what I spoke about, and that was that we prepare the, unless I'm missing it. Prepare the lands that we need to purchase, we don't know what it is. So can we get a report on the actual land?
Prepare a list of properties for sale, is that correct?
No, no. Receive a report on the list of properties that need to be acquired through a government agency, that way it covers. Yep, sorry, can we go down a bit? Once, once we've done point one and with, obviously with councillor Rhodes as a grant, we then need to use that to go to state and federal government. So point two would be, as well as West Rock neighbouring councils, federal MPs proposing. Yeah, actually, you know, fix it up in point two, where we're going then to the state and federal government to allow for the expediated land acquisition for landowners. Yep, no, it's fine, as long as we get that list first.
And can we leave it just at landowners rather than experience hardship in the Eritreopolis because we've already got that?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I do need to, and I'll quickly speak, we've spoken enough, I think, on this to councillor Hagerty. There was nothing taken away from what you were trying to achieve. I think we're both trying to achieve nearly the same thing. All we're asking for first is let's get the list forward so that when we do go and lobby for this, that we do know what we actually need to purchase and how much it's going to cost. That's really the main thing. I'm with the rural residents that are experiencing all these hardship. There's nothing worse than having your land rezoned and then sitting there and not knowing when you're going to get purchased, acquired, to get to move on. I've been through it, it took seven years from the day it was rezoned to the day it finally went. So I totally feel the pain that most people in the Eritreopolis call are going through at the moment. I do have a question though, probably David Smith through you, Mr CEO. Have there been any updates on when any infrastructure, when SUA, when water pipes are going to go through the Eritreopolis?
Thank you councillor. The Western Parkland City Authority, which is headed up by Star Hill, are producing two comprehensive documents. One is a blueprint, which will look at all of the utilities and all, address the issues that you've referred to. The other is an economic development strategy. We're working closely, as all the councils within the city deal region are, with the authority and with all the key agencies involved. And if I could suggest that the authority being mentioned explicitly amongst those that you intend to correspond with as part of point three there. But I'll ask Mr Smith if there's anything else he wishes to add to that.
Thank you through the CEO, no, you've answered that very, very well, so I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Sorry, just a further question to Mr Smith. Previously, we spoke about putting forward a paper that may allow residents in the growth areas, including the Eritreopolis, given now that the zoning has changed, to be able to put in a, let's call it a temporary zone, so they can do something with the land. How is that going?
Yes, thank you, through the CEO, yes, council passed a resolution in relation to Dwyer Road to investigate initiatives and options paper. I'm pleased to advise councils that that will be on the council agenda for the March council meeting. So we're just finalising that and having some discussions with the Department of Planning about what options are available.
Thank you, and with the acceptance of the second, just in point, the first one where we've got, when we get the list of land that we need to, will the second be taken on board that we then write to those landowners advising them of council's hardship policy?
I think that would be a very good idea.
And this is personalised mail so that they know that their land is going to be acquired eventually for a public purpose. But if there is hardship, this is the process that you can go through.
Yes, that's okay with me.
Thank you. And I'll leave it at that, thanks everyone.
Thank you councillor Hachiri.
Point of order.
Anyone wants, anyone wants to speak against the motion, the foreshadow motion?
I just want to raise a point of order.
What is it, what is it?
I might be missing something, but this motion seems almost the same as the one that was drawn. They look, you know, they pretty much seem like the same motions to me, but I'm happy to get a second opinion on that one.
Okay, so your question to the CEO.
Do we have, just for the purposes of clarity, can we have the original motion? I suppose the distinction is that the second motion calls for direct correspondence with the landowners experiencing hardship.
Okay, so.
I'm satisfied that it should sound.
So are you satisfied it's two different motions now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. You've heard the answer councillor Hagerty?
Thank you Chair.
Anyone, anyone would like to speak against the motion? The foreshadow motion?
I'd like to speak in favour of it.
In favour of it?
Yeah.
Go for it. Go for it, councillor.
Um, yeah, I, as I said, I can't see much difference except there's two names on the mover and seconder, so good on them. Um, look, a good idea is a good idea, and as long as we're all, uh, working together as a united council for the best interests of residents, I think that's a good outcome. Um, I'll just make one additional point, on the Department of Planning website, there's an FAQ about the Areatropolis and there's a section on, um, land acquisition. Um, and late last year when you went on there, it told you that they were gonna put out a report, uh, by the end of the year. When you go and look at it now, uh, it's all reference to a date has been removed. Um, so, uh, I'll just leave, I'll just leave everyone with that. Uh, we really need to get the state government to get a move on here.
Okay, councillor, councillor Hagerty, I'm happy for you to add that we write to them asking them why it's been removed.
Yep, well, um, it hasn't been removed, the reference to a date's been removed. David, do you know what the name of that report is? It's basically the Land Acquisition Plan Strategy, something. Through the chair, uh, does David Smith know the name of that report? Mr Smith?
Yeah, through, through the CEO, I don't have that on the top of my head councillor, but I can certainly get that and circulate that to councillors.
All right.
Well, it's not, it's not written yet, that's the problem. Um, it, it, on the website, it proposes the name of the report. Uh, it did have that it would be released towards the end of the year, we're now in the, the next year and there's no date on it.
Yeah, through the CEO.
Happy with point six.
Yeah, I can certainly get that information and circulate that to councillors.
Okay, so you want to keep the six now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with six and I'm happy with anyone else that's got any other ideas to make sure this happens quickly, I've got no issue.
Okay, thanks, you, thank you very much councillor Hachidi. Right, so now I put the, the motion moved by councillor Hachidi and seconded by councillor Rhodes. All in favour, let's go through the list. Councillor Ayad.
I'm for.
Councillor Balot.
Four.
Councillor Hachidi, of course. Councillor Hagerty.
Uh, well, I think this is a slow way to get the same outcome, I'm for.
Okay, thank you, councillor Ha.
Four.
Councillor Kalenda.
Four Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Canib.
Four.
Councillor Road.
Yes, four.
Councillor Shilton.
Four, thank you Deputy Mayor.
And four from me, thank you very much, I declare the motion carried.
Can that be marked unanimously, please, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, of course, it is on the list here, unanimous. Would you please, George, just make sure? Okay, uh, motion number two, councillor Kalenda.
Uh, thank you Deputy, Deputy Mayor, um, I, the background and the motion, um, are pretty self-explanatory. I do know the, um, the recommendation from the CEO, um, and I have had conversations with, um, council staff. So, um, I will follow the recommendation suggested by the CEO, let me just bring that up again, um, which is to uh, change number one to be for the feasibility of expanding community gardens, including footpath gardening and their long-term operation and financial sustainability. And two, to report back the finding, um, to a council meeting, and I would like to put in a specific date, so, um, Deputy Mayor, can I, um, can I just double check with the CEO? June two thousand and twenty-one council meeting is a feasible timeframe.
Okay, just wait to see the full of the motion. Okay? So it's formally moved by you councillor Kalenda. Seconded by councillor Ha, thank you very much. Would you like to speak in favour of your motion councillor Kalenda?
Uh, I'm happy to, to put it to my fellow councillors, I think, um, like I mentioned, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you very much, anyone likes to speak against the motion?
Not speaking against, fully supportive, just in the document through you, can, can things like, and I know when councils previously tried to, um, dispose of pocket parks, um, there's been community outrage because everybody uses them, just take into account the fact that if a pocket park, for example, or some land that's been unused turns into a community garden, uh, what the community around there, just make sure we seek, there, there's provisions in there to seek their consultation uh, before their green space is taken and turned into vegetable green space, which is great green space as well.
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor, I, I absolutely support that, I think, um, the, one of the things that, that identifies whether a community garden is gonna be successful or not is the involvement and the investment of the residents and the community around it. If they don't feel ownership or if they don't feel like they've been consulted in the, the establishment of that, obviously, they won't be involved in the maintenance and the ongoing, um, the, the ongoing sort of, um, dev- sustenance of it, so yeah, I think that should be really an important part of it.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you very much for both of you. Now I put the motion, it's moved by councillor Kalenda, seconded by councillor Ha, or five I say aye, against?
Aye.
Okay, I declare the motion carried, thank you very much. Now we move for conf zero one. Now someone to move the motion, conf zero one?
Uh, I'll, I'll remove, I'll move the motion as per recommendation.
Okay, uh, seconded by? Any seconder?
I'll second.
I'll go, seconded, thank you.
Okay, thank you, is it councillor Hagerty?
Yeah.
Mr Deputy Mayor, just by way of discussion, if the mover and seconder are happy, what you might like to do is put in a paragraph three that this motion or the result of the motion is actually referred to fire and rescue, since we're not acting on their recommendation. No doubt staff would be telling them in any event, but it's probably desirable that it's actually part of the motion that the, um, that the resolution be referred back to fire and rescue in New South Wales.
Okay, thank you councillor Shilton.
Yeah, so if the mover and seconder are happy, I think this is about the first time, for the reasons given, that we're not actually following their recommendation.
Okay, so councillor Road.
Yes, just, just a
councillor Road.
Yes, thank you, just a quick question. Um, do we ha- know the reason how this all eventuated? I mean, there were, uh, there were definitely circumstances where there was non-compliance and somehow it got rectified uh, without the necessity of council orders. Um, I just need reassurance that, um, it wasn't fixed up because they were aware that they were, uh, possibly going to be, uh, have orders put on them, for the reason that, is there any risk that, um, they're going to, uh, go back to whatever caused, uh, the non-compliance in the first place? Do we need to keep a check to make sure that they continue to be compliant?
Councillor Road, I'll hear your question to the CEO.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, um, councillor, we'll ensure, uh, we can certainly carry out a further check on that, but I'll ask Mr Smith to, uh, speak directly to that, if there's any detail about the origins of this.
Uh, thank you through the CEO, the, the origin, um, for our involvement was the referral from fire and rescue. Council staff have investigated and, uh, if, if you refer to page one forty-six of the book noting it's a confidential report, it does provide advice towards the, the end of that page about what council has done in relation to that and council is satisfied, uh, that there is no risk. But of course, uh, if, if council wishes, we can still, um, uh, follow up with a further inspection of the building. Um, and, um, and then the, the recommendation obviously is not to exercise its power to issue a fire safety order at this time.
So would the mover and the seconder be happy with another point put in there that council, uh, initiates another safety check in, uh, to confirm compliance at some date, at a date, at a relevant date? At future date, yes, thank you.
Councillor Ha and councillor Hagerty, are you happy with it?
I was under the impression that that has already been done. According to the reports, that's already been done.
Hey, just a minute, what's your point of order councillor Shilton?
The, um, while I fully support the sentiment in relation to number four, I wonder if the CEO could just comment on whether or not through you, uh, whether or not that's actually directing staff, uh, the, um, in any event, having follow-up checks is something that there should be a policy in place regardless.
Thank you councillor Shilton, I'll tell you the question to the CEO.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, you're welcome.
Uh, my councillor Road.
Councillor Road.
Uh, would it be better that, uh, following councils advice that a, uh, that a
Now, your, your hand up, your hand up.
Yes.
You asked the question, we refer it to the CEO, and now councillor Shilton requiring some information from the CEO, would you please just take your hand? Okay, and be on mute, thank you very much. Yes, Mr Eddy.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, um, councillors will note that the, the building, as Mr Smith has mentioned, that the building has a current AFS uh, certification and it is on council's essential services register, which means that, uh, annual checks do take place on a regular basis.
Okay, are you happy with that councillor Shilton?
I'm just concerned, Mr Deputy Mayor, that if we start, uh, requesting checks in relation to this building, what are the implications where we haven't requested checks in the future? We shouldn't get into the business of requesting checks generally through council resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Deputy Mayor, am I aye with the indulgence of the mover and seconder?
Yes.
Just in relation to councillor Shelton's point three, just after New South Wales Fire and Rescue, with the, stating the reasons why we did not exercise our powers.
Okay. If that's Councillor Ha and Hagerty, are you happy with it?
Happy with point three, uh, I think given the discussion we've had about, about point four, I think that's, yeah, I, I agree with councillor Shelton and it would appear that that is already covered as part of sort of the, you know, the processes we undertake.
Okay, so we move number four now. Okay, so you've got one, two, three now, are you happy with it councillor Ha?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so now.
Uh, I have another question if I may, before you move forward.
Okay, go ahead councillor Road.
I must have misunderstood, but council did advise that, um, they would be, um, carrying out annual, um, inspections. So I, I would just feel comfortable if it was noted that council, uh, carries out regular, uh, inspections of properties on an annual basis.
If that makes you happy councillor Rhodes, I'm happy to agree with it.
Okay, thank you councillor Hagerty, councillor Ha.
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Thank you very much, okay, so as long as everyone's happy now, can I put the motion? Moved by councillor Ha and councillor, signed it by councillor Hagerty, all five I say aye. Against? I declare the motion carried, thank you very much.
Mr Deputy Mayor, can I have the next two items go into closed session under the actual acts after a five-minute air breather?
Okay, so we got for clause for, yeah, yeah, it's moved by councillor Hachidi and seconded by councillor Ha. So we're going for the clause session. Uh, Mr Eddie Jackson, would you please make sure staff not listening? And we will have like ten minutes, a break, and we'll come back.
Move that way.
Thank you very much, seconded, thank you very much. Okay. So should we read the motions now, possibly?
Do not.
Yes Deputy Mayor, the two motions that were considered in closed session were conf oh two and conf oh three.
So we have to read it there?
Yes, so conf oh two's on the screen there.
Okay, thank you very much, so. Comes through recommendation that council receives a nod your report concerning the illegal affairs of Liverpool City Council. So the council decision, the motion moved by councillor Hachidi and signed it by councillor Road. We declare the motion carried. Conf zero three, recommendation that council enter into lease with the southwestern Sydney local health district for premises known as Courtside Cafe, located in Biggitt Park for a period of five years on the terms outlined in this report. The motion moved by councillor Ha, seconded by councillor Kalenda, the recommendation that be adopted. Thank you very much. My friend, well look, we came to the end of today, uh, meeting. I declare the meeting is a close, and thank you very much for your cooperation, for making my job very easy tonight. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.